I'd like to call this meeting for the council of the village of Green Hills, June 4th, 2013, to order. Let everyone please rise. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the clerk call the roll, please.
Adams?
Here.
Dries?
Here.
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Walterman?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
All right. We're all here tonight. At this time, we have an opportunity to approve the minutes of the May 7th regular council meeting and the May 21st work session and special meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the pile of meeting minutes from last month. There are no objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this point in the meeting, we have an opportunity for residents to address council. If when recognized, please come forward, state your name, address, and your comments. Three minutes. All right.
Hi, my name's Diana Kohler. I live at 53 Ilona, and I'm a resident here in Green Hills. And I wanted to take an opportunity to thank the fire department for all the hard work they do. I was just watching some videos on YouTube of some of their trainings, and amazing what they go through for volunteering in our village. The work that they put in and being called out at all hours of the night. Really appreciate their work. I'd also like to see if the village would be interested in making the first step in the new zoning that we have, Chapter 18 for the historic district overlay. We have a wonderful home outside here, the Marquette Wellenhome, and it'd be great if the village would make the first initial proposal and get that home designated as part of our historic overlay, so that the residents can see the process and see the dedication that the village has towards our historical homes. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. I think it's a good idea. We'll have to kick Chapter 18 into gear.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing done. Reports, village officials, municipal managers.
Good. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a number of items I want to mention tonight. First, I apologize, I didn't have time to gather up all the public record requests that I will hold last month for next month. Couple things I do want to mention, our skate park, we've had some vandalism, unfortunately, I think twice this week, twice within a week, and I just want to let you know, it seems to be kind of an ongoing issue that we're having there. The service department will again be trying to get the graffiti off, but I just thought it was time, it's happening often enough, that you, I thought you better be aware that that was occurring, so...
Is it on the concrete? Are the benches?
All of it.
All of it?
In fact, today, we took all the benches away and the trash can away. There's not much left of the benches sadly, and the garbage can. I think the lid was missing, but the bottom is, you know, one of the big heavy kind of stone.
Concrete.
So while there was still something left of that, we, that's all been removed now. So we'll see what that does, if anything.
Wasn't just graffiti on the benches, they were concrete broken, slats missing, and they were destroyed. They're not reusable. It wasn't graffiti. They were just destroyed.
You know, I don't suspect it was the skaters so much. They understand that good behavior equals no problems up there. We do have other people come down. Just ask the police department to keep an eye over there, see if they can get a handle, and I'll make some inquiries into the skating community to see if we can figure out who's doing this. You're gonna go down with your board? No, I've got operatives.
Okay, 'cause I was there just a couple weeks ago, and it didn't have anything, but it just happened.
Yeah, I think it just happened overnight.
Wow.
Oh, wow. And I have to say, the service department does a great job of getting it off as fast as they possibly can, so...
Okay, when it gets hot. But now there's damage to the concrete itself. That was poured.
I know. Well, there's graffiti. And whatever they're using is rather difficult to get off.
Okay, all right.
But no, we took the benches away. Besides being totally broken up, they too had graffiti on them, and that's all gone now. Took that away, so. Wanted to mention that. Another thing is that throughout town, you know, we had the Waterworks project that completed, was completed last year, and if anybody's aware of any outstanding issues for the Waterworks project, the one-year period during which they'll come and make restoration, I guess, of the areas where they had caused some damage, that's rapidly approaching. I believe it's during July. So I would just want to encourage everybody to contact Waterworks really directly. The person's name is Mark Nihi, and the number is 591-7870, and I can put that on the website if you, again, if you think you have any outstanding items from that project, we want to be sure. We think we've caught everything, but there might be something out there we're not aware of. Want to let you know that. And in a little while, maybe during recreation, I wanted to give you an update. Mr. Hermes may be doing that, but I did want to review the cost that we have, where we stand right now with the playground project, so I'll wait and kind of, unless you want me to do it now, whatever.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Should I? Okay. You might remember when we did the community development block grant, that playground, the playground over by Malloy's was the number one priority. Sadly, CDVG did not give us any money for it, but we agreed that we would fund it ourselves. So councils, the Recreation Commission, and Mr. Halter, you know, a number of us have been working with different vendors to get the best prices on some things, and we're, I think, we're really close to doing that. Our engineer, we also had to do a plan, a site plan with grading for the underground drainage, things like that, to be sure we had that in place. And we're coming close to giving a go to the Jeffrey Allen Corporation, who has a lot of experience on something like this. And then the playground equipment, we are getting from a company, David Williamson Associates. They, but they also, we bought like the drinking fountain from them, or this is the kind of thing that they do. But I wanted to make you aware of it, mostly with the new requirements on bidding that have gone up. We're able to do this without council approval, but it's a lot of money, so I want to be sure you're aware of it and know what's going on. The cost for the Jeffrey Allen portion is about $17,000 to do, it's a rather large, what is it, 60 by 100 area that they'll be doing with the under-drain work. And the equipment, which is really nice looking, I think you'll be really satisfied, is about $37,000. So we're hoping to have, I think it's, we have about a 28-day lead time from the time we went okay until you would, probably about 14 days to see some activity and 28 days to see the pieces of equipment there. So we're pretty excited and want to let you know we're moving, moving very well on that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is that general fund, or is that special revenue 2041?
Special revenue.
Yeah, from Recreation.
Okay.
I want to mention, just from a community development standpoint, I see a lot of value. We have new excitement with the golf course and that being handled really well. We've got the pool, and now with this, what I would call a destination playground in that area, really makes it a hub for families and people to go to. Do hope that we can have not the issue with vandalism and keep an eye on all that's going on, but obviously, the more it's used, the less that'll occur. But I think it's a good thing, very good thing for the community. It's hard to think of driving your kids to just a swing set or a slide, but when it's a big setup like this, I think it's a real draw, so I think it's a good thing.
Good.
Are we doing any lighting in conjunction with this? Any lighting changes? Is this gonna be strictly a daylight playground, right?
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, one thing that came up was a possible sign that would close at dusk, so there's no reason for people to be loitering there after that, or something like that. Might be worth considering.
All right.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
All done. Any other questions for the manager?
I just had a couple of remarks. The, on the weekend of Memorial Day, I stopped by the pool, and I counted on the listing of things, and there were like 172 passes, and some of them were families, some of them were singles and so forth. They were hoping addition to that because school wasn't even out yet. So I think that's going well. What is your impression of that?
Definitely, yeah. We were pleased, and I know we've received more since then. I don't have a count for you, but yeah, we're real pleased.
And then also received an email from Mr. Suggs, and he said that the membership for the golf has doubled to what it was last year, and so that's also very good news. Have you had any more activity there to report, or?
Yeah, in fact, you know, it's an interesting thing, the machine, the swipe machine up there, I actually get an email every time it's used. So it's really interesting, and I, I mean, compared to last year, it's, yeah, we're definitely taking in more money than we need to. That's great, that's great, definitely.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, law director, Mr. Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Since there hasn't been any more activity in those state legislative items that we've been discussing, I don't have any report for council tonight.
Very well.
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Forbes, if I may. I had an email for the House Bill 59, and there were some amendments made on that, whether or not it's going to affect us in any way, if I may ask you for three particular things. Number one was the elimination, and this has already been handed out at the Board of Elections as done, so it's an amendment that was voted on on May 28th, eliminating the requirement that a candidate or legislative campaign fund includes the address of the candidate or campaign officer in disclaimers after the words "paid for" or "by." So that's, that has been eliminated officially now after voting.
Okay.
So for any, anybody that would be running or anything like that, that would be something to know. It also requires the Director of Administrative Services to develop standards for posting public records online, so that information can be searched and downloaded. That was another one that was reported. And the last one, and I don't know if this will affect us positively, it was the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation approved on Thursday a plan that would deliver a total of $1 billion in rebates, and it would be expected to be entitled, for the parties that apply, up to a 56% of the premiums. I just wonder if that also affects us in any way positively in that case.
It does, no. I'll get that in the finance report.
Okay.
All right. Anything else for law director? Clerk, Ms. Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number 201311CD and ordinance number 201313F and the May community calendar were posted as required, and public notices were posted on the rescheduled Recreation Commission meeting of May 16th, 2013, Traffic and Safety Committee meeting of May 29th, 2013, and the Clerk of Court's accreditation manager position. Additionally, cancellation notice of the Traffic and Safety Committee of May 28th was also posted. And if there are any questions, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Lives. Any questions for the clerk? Moving on. Police Department.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. You have the monthly stats and the crime analysis report. April Officer of the Month was Andy Moore.
Good.
He picked for his productivity and his work, weren't that, work ethic.
And how scary he looks, too.
Yeah, how scary he looks. On May 15th, Officer Johnston served a search warrant in the A section and successfully shut down a marijuana grow house.
Wow.
And that's all that happened.
What section is that?
A section.
All right. Good work, y'all. Good work. Any questions for the police department? Keep doing what you're doing. Appreciate it immensely. Fire Department, Chief Spade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Statistics for the month of May, we had 31 EMS runs. 28 of those were in the village, and three were in the Springfield Township contract. On fireside, we had 24 fire runs, seven in the village, and 17 mutual aid. One of the mutual aid fires that we responded to was the fatal fatality in North College Hill. We had a total of 55 runs for the month, and at year-to-date, we're at 261. Sunday, I sent out a short press release, so I know you guys are aware, we had a structured fire on Chalmers Court on the early hours of Sunday morning. That investigation is complete. Looking at a $10,000 to $15,000 fire loss there, and it was ruled accidental on attended cooking. Just a couple of reminders or things that come to mind. I talk about this a lot, a working smoke alarm is paramount, and also renters insurance, if you can afford it, is very, very inexpensive, and in this particular case, there was, again, no renters insurance, so the building itself is insured by the person that owns it, so those repairs, I'm sure, will be made. However, unfortunately for the residents there, they did not have renters insurance. So those are good reminders. And our crews did a fantastic job, and everybody, nobody got hurt, the fire went out, so that's why we like it. Brad Harden has completed his probationary membership period and was voted in as a regular member at our monthly business meeting last night, so congratulations to him. He is a village resident. On May 15th, myself, along with Division Chief Tom Hoffman, Bethany Hefner, and A.J. Coley participated in the Hamilton County MCI drill exercise that took place down at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds. It was, the exercise went very, very well. We were there for about three hours. To see all of the resources that we have available on a regional basis is just something awesome. It's a shame that people don't realize what we have at our disposal, but the entire mat team was activated, the hospital network, and the helicopters and regional units from the surrounding counties, including northern Kentucky, and the exercise itself went very, very well, and we learned a lot, and there'll be an act or action plan coming very soon to where we can identify areas of where we can do a little bit better job, and then also celebrate, you know, some of the successes that we experienced during that exercise. But it was, it was very educational. Last week, our K-9 officer, Tony Leidenbore, attended the funeral service for the slain K-9 police officer, Jason Ellis, in Bardstown, Kentucky, so we were happy to have Tony represent us there in that very unfortunate circumstance. And finally, last week, I attended, the Winton Woods State Schools has been in the process of updating their emergency plan in light of federal funding that's now available and the heightened awareness of school shootings and other incidents that have been occurring, unfortunately, within school districts. You know, we have three of their facilities in our own village, so myself, along with fire and police officials from the City of Forest Park, we met with the school district and went over their draft plan and made some recommendations, and they'll be making a few adjustments, and then that final plan will be available very soon. So hopefully, we won't ever have to put that into play, but should that happen, any, any sort of emergency at the school, whether it's a weather-related incident, or a shooting, or a fire, or anything in between, we hope to be as well-prepared for that as possible. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief. Any questions for the fire department? Mr. Walterman.
Another question, just another thank you to the fire department. My wife had to be taken to Mercy Hospital last week, and as usual, they were there right away, took good care of her, you know, friendly, comfortable, competent, as usual. People came to the house and got her to the hospital fine, she's home, she's doing fine, but want to thank you guys again for all you do.
My pleasure.
I also want to thank the, all the volunteer work. And the news today on the newspaper, they had the closing of Distinction Number 27 in Hamilton, Ohio, and they were going to try to have a rally to try to keep it open, and it's just such a blessing to have a volunteer fire department that is always there for us, and thank you so very much to all of you for that. I really appreciate it.
It's a pleasure.
All right. Moving on, mayor's report. And I forgot to bring the audited court receipts, so I guess I'm gonna have to catch up on that next month.
That's the only reason I came up here, I guess.
It was pretty good. We had a reasonably decent month. I can, I remember that much. Ah, it's a tough life. Anyway, I had the distinct pleasure of delivering an address to the Memorial Day ceremonies last Monday. That is always an inspirational event for me, and I enjoy that very much. It's one of the parts of this job that I will miss dearly when I move on from this chair at the end of the year. Also, last week, Congressman Brad Winstrup and his associate, whom I can't remember her name, Rachel, Rachel, Rachel from Brad Winstrup's office, dropped by to visit, and the manager and I sat down and had a chat with them. We talked a little bit about, you know, ways that the congressman may be able to assist us, perhaps with our national historic landmark designation, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. And I had a chance to, you know, give him a brief history of the village, and we went and took a walk around the shopping center, and, you know, and I got to point out that we have the only volunteer fire department in southwestern Ohio, and he was pretty impressed by that. And, and I told him, you know, you guys were volunteers only in the sense that you don't get paid, and he was just amazed. Nobody gets paid anything? I said, Congressman, nobody gets paid a dime, but that doesn't mean you're not a professional department. And we appreciate that professionalism and the volunteer spirit that you all demonstrate. And the congressman was pretty darn impressed, too.
Hopefully, he'll vote favorably on a few upcoming legislative issues.
Well, you let me, you let me know, and I'll be happy to drop him a note. And if no one else has any questions, that's all I've got for today.
Ed, I just want to say one thing. For the last time that Fred was doing a talk there for Memorial Day services, I was there with my wife, and she just kind of looked over at me, and she was just, she says, "Oh my God, that was totally awesome." It was really, it was mesmerizing, heartfelt, strong, and, you know, it's, I just want to commend you on that. I'm gonna miss that. That's really neat. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree.
All right. Moving on. Committee reports. Let's see, we've got them, we'll just take them in order, she's got them printed here. Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Ms. Walther.
We had a meeting scheduled for the month of June, unless, at the point where we are arriving to that, I think it's June 24th, I will consult with Mr. Walterman and Ms. Kovak whether or not we need to get together at this time. We don't have anything on the agenda for that. Is that correct, Mr. Walterman?
Nothing, I don't know.
Okay, Ms. Kovak?
I don't know.
Okay. So when we get closer to the date, we would figure out if we need to keep the date. I attended the meeting yesterday to meet the two final candidates for superintendent in Winton Woods as my liaison for the school system, and I met there, Mr. Dries was also there. And we had the final two from the second round, because this is a second full round of interviews. On the, on Thursday, which is the first Thursday of the month, I would be attending the picnic for the Green Hills Hilltoppers, and that would be by Perky's Farm, and it was, Ms. Kovak was gracious enough to put advertisement there, so if anybody needs to contact or anything, there is a contact number and name there. And I would be attending the verification meeting coming up. Mr. Halter, is that also on Thursday?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And please, everybody, everybody that is able, show up and come to the first concert on the Commons, because we're having the first one for the 75th anniversary festivities, and I'm sure you're going to add on to that. It's always a pleasure to be there, and I don't know about the weather-wise, but we'll hope for the best on that. I think it's going to be gorgeous, according to the weatherman, and I think we've got everything ready for it. Thank you very much, and that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, yeah. You know, it's funny, because I was gonna ask you two things, and you talked about those two things right away, about the school superintendent, 'cause I was really curious to find out what was going on with that, the final two, and also the Hilltop elders, and you had that information. You're the gal, baby!
You know, I'm, I'm just always on top of things, so...
Good. 'Cause you go to a lot of meetings, that's neat.
All right. Moving along, Mr. Hermes, Recreation Cable TV.
Oh, it's my turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we met for the final time with the playground people, and it was really, it's a nice meeting, just kind of get everybody together, all the minds together, and then Bob Gury, who's from David Williamson Associates, he's a great guy, just so professional, he's been doing it since 1987, and with Jeff had some different layouts, Jeff Halter, and, you know, heard some really good ideas and stuff, and then they kind of going back and forth on how to arrange it, and so they came up with a solution, how it's gonna be. So it just needed, you know, there's time invested in that and knowing what's gonna be the best-case scenario for the playground, 'cause it's a big investment, but it's gonna be really sharp. And then, of course, Jeff's picked out a lot of the different things that go in it, as far as the colors and that kind of stuff, so I don't want to stir and throw everything out there. It will be on the website, as far as the final layout is concerned here, within a web, within the week, so you'd be able to go on the website and actually take a look at it, what it's gonna look like. So that, it's, it's pretty exciting. We're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and like what Yvonne was talking about, it's gonna be, you know, probably end of June, first week of July, you know, getting it really rocking and rolling, getting it finished, so they're gonna do their best to get it done as soon as they can. Just want to make a mention, next month, we'll be having a meeting right before the Fourth of July parade and festival, and Community Day at the pool, which is part of the dine and dive, so we're gonna have it all together. It's gonna be on the 5th and 6th of July, something will be in the Green Hills Journal coming up, and also the Hilltop Press, and we'll be calling you on the one call now, at least a couple times, so everybody know what's happening, so coming up. And that's about it for now.
All right. Any questions for Recreation Cable TV?
Yeah, Mr. Hermes?
Just call me Greg, that's all right.
Mr. Hermes? What is the date for the next meeting? There was some confusion of the date, and I couldn't make for the next, for the next meeting, what would be your date for that?
Yeah, that was my fault when I made that announcement last time.
I couldn't make the switch, so what is the date?
So basically, it's the next, it's the Thursday after our work session meeting.
Okay, Thursday after the work session, okay.
Right. At 7:30 here.
Yes, thank you. And then also, I missed the meeting, so I just wonder, anybody brought up the walk?
I wasn't there either.
Okay.
It's a real busy time of year for me, for business. I'm not almost every night.
I just wonder if anybody brought up the point of the walks and marking of the walks, and if it already had been measured, and I just wonder if anything has come about.
I attended, I don't think that was one of the topics. There was a lot of things talked about, but the walkway was not one of the topics. There was a lot of talk about the playground, and I think Doug had a number of things that he brought forth to go over, but just so you know, that wasn't covered.
Okay. And I have a question for you. With your experience on the recreation and so forth, the idea of the walks, marking the walks and so forth, and having some kind of a schedule.
Yes.
Do you think that that might be a good idea in view of what has happened on the Commons as a deterrent, to know that there is a certain regulated amount of folks that are going to be walking a certain day or a certain time?
Ooh, I don't know if it's gonna be, I mean, doing the walks and having it marked off, I think it was a great idea, it was brought up by Vince Wesley, he really wanted to have that done, and we're gonna be really pursuing that. I think as far as time and day and every writing down when they're gonna be walking...
Okay, there's not going to be a set schedule for that?
I think there's gonna be a schedule for people who want to be a part of a team to walk, and that's gonna be up to them, as far as if they want to get together and say, "Hey, at 6 o'clock, we're gonna do our three-mile walk, and we're gonna do this, this, and this."
Okay.
But it's not gonna be monitoring people as far as when they're gonna be walking and when, it's, I think it's, I think it's a little tough.
Okay.
What are we talking about there? The walk?
Oh, they, they wanted to do a, do a mark-off walk, let's say, from, from the, down there at Winton Woods, coming up here, just doing different things.
Who's doing this?
Well, the Red Commission, they want to make markings on sidewalks.
Oh, just chart out a course, more or less.
Then they know how far you're walking.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was an event, I thought it was so...
Well, the Rec Commission, they wanna make markings on sidewalks.
Oh, just charting out a course, more or less.
Then you know how far you're walking.
Okay. I thought it was an event, I thought it was some sort of an event happening.
No. I mean, it's gonna be a daily event.
Perhaps, yeah. They have a similar thing at the Wynton Hill Campus at work. They've got an area marked off, and they've got little markers that are buried in the ground that tell you how far you are from, you know, the start of the thing, and it's, you know, like a one and a half mile, a little loop that you can do.
There's gonna be several of them, and you, you know, there'll be a plan, I'm sure, laid out, that'll be on the website when this is completed, and, and people, groups of people who wanna sign up to be a part of a team to do walking, just to get people out there and start doing something, and also conversing with people in the village, and, you know, I think it's a great idea, so.
Yeah, it is, good idea.
Greg, I had one thing, just, I really appreciate you've put a lot of time in lately. I see you, every time I come by the golf course or something, I know that the playground's taken a lot of your time, and, like you mentioned, it's a busy time of the year, but really think that you're really owning some, some of the stuff that's happening and spending a lot of time. Thanks for doing that. The other thing, too, is just so you know, to be clear for the record, that I did pick and suggest a piece of equipment on there, but Terry Trynant actually went through the catalog and found that the one big unit that we have, because we wanted to get...
The vector?
Yeah, we wanted to get as much bang for our buck.
Yeah.
And, and also, having met those guys today, it's nice to know, very professional, know their stuff, and to see all the different parties coming together and putting their ideas, like you said, on the table.
Yeah.
I can't think of a better way to do it. You can only do so many emails, but thanks for putting forth that effort, too.
And Yvonne was there to calm us all down, and she was, she was being bothered by flies and bugs.
She's wearing those tall guys, we're fine, we don't have any hair.
All right. Anything else for Recreation, Community Development? Mr. Halter?
Yes, a number of things. We have the concert coming up this week, is the kickoff for our concert series. The following week is Pam Noah, fits our 75th anniversary, and we're gonna be introducing the 75th anniversary flag. You guys will get a sneak peek as I pass this around your way.
Sneak peek.
One thing, you know, with, I'm finding out there's a lot, a lot of history with our current flag, so this is, you know, reflected, this is focused on the 75th, and I've got extra copies for anybody afterwards that would like to get some. The idea is introduce the flag, and we're gonna take orders. We won't have them right there for purchase, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday we'll be able to take orders, and, and that'll be a kickoff, it'll be a great evening, the music will be consistent with our anniversary celebration. Along with that, I have a calendar of 75th anniversary events. I apologize that this isn't out sooner, but it's not, and here it is. We had some nebulous things, I would like to just briefly go over this, and if you have suggestions, please let us know. We were gonna do the Community Day at the pool on the 22nd, but it was so close to the dine and dive, it seemed to all work together, so what we are doing is there's that 75 cent charge for anyone in the community to get into the pool on July 5th. We have, like I mentioned, July 12th, I'm sorry, June 12th is the flag, introduction of the flag, and then we will go into Friday and Saturday Pioneer Days, that's gonna be covered in the Green Hills Journal. As many of you know, there's the run and walk that happens in the morning. We'll have on Saturday from...
That's Saturday, the 6th, right?
Yes, 6th, sorry. I know I handed this to you for a reason. And then October 19th, we're gonna have a Harvest Festival. We have our December 6 Light Up Green Hills, and then we will cycle around to the Second Annual I Love Green Hills Dinner and Dance. And then we'll have a closing ceremony April, in April, that would take us through the entire year. And one other thing I forgot to mention was, and this is another thing that we'll do primarily on an order basis, I'll get some samples in, but these are T-shirt options that'll be available on the, during the dine and dive slash Community Day at the pool, looking at that. We won't have this, this many, but it'll give you an idea of what we'll be putting together. So, we'll have T-shirts, there might be some other things that we've looked at that might be available at that time as well. We still have some bases and things like that that we'll probably have set up under a canopy on that Saturday. But that's pretty much my report. Any questions?
You know, I love it. Do we have any costs on the flags?
Right now, the cost is coming in, the first one is more expensive, but after that first one, it's $35 a flag. Now, we may, I have to look at the, that was that first quote that I had, depends on how many we order.
Right.
So, what I'll do is get a feel for how many are needed, and then, because one of the recommendations that came forth was, this is a standard flag size, but someone said that you might wanna do a vertical banner type that people might hang from porches and that kind of thing, which would be smaller.
Yeah, we did, we did hit those for the 60th, 60th.
Okay.
Did those for the 60th. But I like the idea of a regular flag flag, too.
Yeah.
I like that a lot.
And really, it's not that difficult to have both, so if, if you have comments and wanna email me.
Yeah, I mean, the expense, are these silk screens?
No, right now, and we went back and forth about this, but right now, they're digitally printed, but this is, there's digitally printed on just, that everybody has, this is a special, this is through a flag company over in Oakley, what is it, Flags USA, no, I think it's Flags USA. And they, they have a, they have a vendor that's digitally printed, but it's, it's not standard digital. So, the color should be color fast, rich, and, and that, we could've gone with more colors, but I just thought that, you know, keeping with the historical piece, that we keep it kinda basic and straightforward.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you for all your hard work.
Jeff, I know at the dance, there were some glasses and other stuff, are those gonna be available somewhere somehow?
Yeah, we, we have the ability to have more of those etched right now, where you only have tumblers left. I, if, if there's a strong feeling to have some more, it doesn't take much to get those, and it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Someone asked me about it the other night.
Yep. And you, and if someone wants them, you know, you can just contact me directly, and I have no problem even doing it order by order, you know, smaller batches. But I really appreciate and welcome the feedback, because all this stuff is very difficult to know what's a decent quantity to get. Right now, what's nice with the digital process and a lot of these is they're not holding us to huge quantities. But if we know that, you know, there's quite a demand for T-shirts or flags, and I have a general idea, I could, you know, solve the waiting problem and get 25 in, or get 50 in, depending on what, what people think, so.
Just a suggestion, could we put something on the website that has the flag, here's the price, here's the T-shirt, here's the price, here's the volume, price?
Yes, we can. We wouldn't be taking money for those, or, but we definitely could invite people to look at it, and I think that's a great suggestion. We could put that in a PDF or something. All right. Thanks.
Excellent, excellent. Moving along, Traffic and Safety, Mr. Walterman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did not have a meeting, we had a meeting scheduled, but because of other issues, we had to cancel our meeting. We'll be rescheduling that. However, as usual, I'll remind everyone to, when you go to buy your, renew your license, make sure that the paperwork you get back indicates the community you live in to be Green Hills, because it shows up Wyoming and other things from time to time, and just make sure it says Green Hills. If it doesn't, you can take the paperwork back and they will fix it. So, be sure and do that. Also, I think Sergeant Ward felt sorry for me, because I didn't have really a lot to talk about, so she asked me to remind everyone that the vacation checks is an option you have, and we're getting into vacation season, we're already in vacation season, and it used to be available online on our website, but it's not, it's not working right now, but you can call the police department, fill out a form, make arrangements to fill out a form, come up here, and what'll happen is then, there'll be a daily check of your home. Check, make sure the door's locked, make sure, do a visual walk around, make sure everything looks okay. You can let them know if there's gonna be visitors, and who are authorized to go into the house to check things, or pick up mail, or whatever, so that if we do find somebody there, we won't shoot them or anything, so. But this is a nice thing to do, and gives you a little more security when you're away, and you know that somebody's checking your house every day, so please contact the Green Hills Police Department if you would like that to happen prior to going on vacation. And that's my report.
I feel really safe when you mention about shooting them.
Yeah.
Sends chills up my spine.
You know, we have such a violent-ridden community.
That's right. Any questions for Traffic and Safety? Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a couple of questions for Mr. Halter, if that's okay, if I ask out of order?
Go right ahead.
Okay.
If only if I have the answers.
Okay, well, what is the, the price, guest estimate, whatever, for the shirts?
I've got a quote coming in, it was supposed, supposed to be in today, and they said tomorrow, so.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
Okay. Also, I would like to have a flag for the parade time, so if you're taking orders down the end to put on my house. Also, when you get the orders, if you need someone to deliver, to help you deliver that, count on me as well.
And Greg, it's volunteering, too.
I am? Okay.
Okay. Because if you get the address, when you have the order and you get it there, I, you know.
Sure.
I'm kind of an outgoing person, I knock on the door and chat a little bit.
I, no, that's...
No. If I answered the door, I wouldn't see her. Murray of the Wallflower.
This totally shocks you, probably, yeah.
I have a question for Mr. Halter.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have a booth at the festival with shirts and flags and tumblers and...
Yes.
I know you're really busy, if you need somebody to work that.
Oh, no, I appreciate that. And I know the mayor's wife had volunteered as well, and I am more in the camp of taking full advantage of volunteers than ever, so. Not advantage in a bad way, but put them to work.
Let me know, you know, 10 or 15 minute period, you need me there.
Well, and also, just why we're on the volunteer topic is, when it comes to Community Day slash dine and dive at the pool, where we'll be serving hot dogs and hamburgers and that kinda thing, so.
Yeah.
I think it'll, there's something special about being served by a councilperson, so.
Yeah.
I'm experienced. I'm experienced at that, to make sure that you tap on that.
But thank you, and, and I apologize for not having a price on, on the shirts, so.
Okay.
I've been working with one vendor, and they just went through strike three, and they haven't come through. They were supposed to have shirts for the I Love Green Hills Dinner, that didn't come through. Told me it was a technical problem, had another project, they didn't come through, and he assured me it was fine, and I am sitting here without that, so we have a different vendor that I picked up today, one I've used in the past and can count on, so.
I wanna say something real quick. You know, we've always had our, our meetings in other places and talk about how it's great to be around guys, people like yourselves, to do work and be inspired. But I really, since he's been on council, Jeff, he's inspired me, because he's got such conviction, he works so hard, and he's so dedicated on, on what he's doing, it's, it's like, wow, you know, it's, I can't believe all the stuff that he ends up doing, it's just incredible. Now, he says, because I don't, not, not being real busy with work, but we talk about it, maybe God makes it that way, so you can make the 75th a wonderful time, because it's a really, he's done a marvelous job, I feel, it's just, it's awesome. No, I thank you very much for that.
Well, thank you.
Jeff, how is it going to be handled, the, the payment on that? Is it going to be credit card, is it going to be, how, how, if you make an order, how do we pay you?
Right, right now, I, I'll, I'll cover those details later.
Okay.
I know that, I, I have the ability to take a credit card, and depending if we go through the office.
Okay.
We'll, we'll try to make it easy, but also, I'll come out with those details next time around.
Yeah, that's working on me, get, get it more cooked. Streets and Services, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report, other than to mention my family and I also attended the Memorial Day Parade and festivities. I Oco, your speech was great, I thought you did a wonderful job, very, very well spoken. It was neat, got to watch my daughter march with the little Girl Scouts and everything. The flyover was really...
That was really neat.
That was awesome.
Two or three times.
Yeah, so, everybody put that together, thanks a lot, you did a great job. And it was pretty well attended, but I think it's one of those events that it'd be great to see just the streets lined up and down, and have it completely full, because it, it's a, it's a great event, just as, as being a part of the village, and then also just as, as an American, and...
No, I, I did a quick count, not counting the band or the fire department, there are at least 250 people there.
Yeah, yeah. It was a great day.
Not too bad.
Was that, was that recorded? I think way...
Way across, was it?
No, they weren't there.
Oh, they weren't there?
Okay. I, I, I thought it was really fantastic, and I know that it's already been hammered home, but...
It's a great event.
No, I just thought that you did, I think you did such a great job. I mean, I thought that that was, it really, it's one of the best memorial events I've ever been to, and I think it's because of what you had to say.
Thank you.
It's great.
And if it was different than that, I would've told you.
Okay, I'm sure you would. All right.
At the proper time, I do have an ordinance to present that relates to tree pruning and removal.
All right. Any questions for Services and Streets? Mr. Dries, final thing to audit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items. Sorry, Mr. Hermes. First, I'll respond to Ms. Walter's question about the Bureau of Workers' Comp. They will be returning approximately $15,000 to the Village of Green Hills.
Yee-hoo!
And that will go to the general, that'll go into, back into the general fund. We have some capital projects that we do not have funded this year, and that money could potentially be used for that. We can talk more at the work session, but one of the things that I'm gonna suggest that we consider is the repaving of the parking lot by Malloy's, by the new playground, by the really happening, happening, happening golf course. So, it, it's in poor repair, and every year that we wait, it's gonna be more expensive to repair it. So, we, we can talk about that at the work session, but potentially, we could use that $15,000 as a portion of the money to, to...
I thought we were on that path already, right?
We are.
Okay.
It's every little bit of my heel health.
Yeah. Yeah. I mentioned the golf course. They are up to 28 members, but two, three things that the general public should know. Number one, this Friday, there's a Junior League starting at 8:30 in the morning, so if your young child would like to learn how to play golf, it's, it's kinda like getting Mario Andretti to do Drivers Ed. Joel Suggs is like the creme de la creme, and I wish that he would've taught me when I was a youngster, and I wouldn't have so many bad habits, but that starts this Friday, so I would encourage you to bring your youngster up, and he'll be happy to teach him, and he's, he's a great instructor.
Are they gonna do Tuesdays and Fridays like they have in past years, or just Fridays?
Just Friday.
Just Fridays.
Just Fridays.
Yeah.
I think August 2nd.
Yes. Secondly, he has some group lessons that he periodically does, and if you call the And if you call the Caddyshack, there's a recording there and he talks about those. And I participated in one last week. And I've been playing golf for 40 years, and he taught me many things. So none of us are too old to learn. And then also, the golf course is available for outings. You can rent the whole joint, you know, your church group, your, our block has a block party every year. We could have a community, our block could have a golf outing. There are lots of opportunities. My office is going to have some kind of group outing and we may end up at the golf course. So there's a lot of opportunity to rent the whole place. He's very flexible. If you give him a crazy idea, he'll probably figure a way to make it work. And the golf course looks great. My wife's been out of town, so I've been up there a few times. And Joel and his son Taylor are doing a great job. So go up there, take advantage of it. We participate in an audit every two years. And for the years ending December 31st, 2011 and 2012, our audit has just been completed by the Auditor of State. And the audit report came back as a, what I would describe as a very clean audit. There were no journal entry adjustments. The audit didn't have any variances, didn't have any management recommendations. It's a, it's kind of the fiscal officer's report card. And we did very well. In fact, we've done so well, and because of the size we are, we are eligible for the next two audit periods, which happen every two years, to have a abbreviated type audit where they don't do as an in-depth look unless they find any irregularities. And what that means to the village is lower cost. So we were very excited to get a very positive audit. I'm going to ask the municipal manager to put the, have the audit available on the website so people can look at it. But congratulations to the staff for doing a good job with our books and.
Kim especially.
Yes.
Yeah, and, you know, we've always prided ourselves on our fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're doing everything right. This is just more evidence of the fact.
And the last item I have is our budget. And I'm just going to take a little bit of time to talk about our process, and then I will hit just a very few highlights of our budget as it stands right now. As required by law, council has received a draft copy of the budget at our May work session. There are, it's difficult to give them a very refined budget because this, the county does not have all the numbers to give to us in order for us to comply. So we put in some estimates. In some spots in the budget, we leave blank until we get better, until we get an estimate or a number from the county. So it's a very frustrating process for, for me, anyway. We are still getting some of those numbers. At our next work session, you will get a revised draft. We will have a public hearing on July 2nd. And then we will have to pass something prior to, I believe it's July 16th, to get it down to the county. In a perfect world, we would have a public hearing and have a few weeks' time and another meeting to vote on the budget. But if we move the public hearing more forward, we don't have information from the county, and so we have more problems than we have answers. We have a better process than we had in prior years, but it's still not ideal. A few words about the budget. It is a balanced budget. It is not deficit spending. We do not print money in Green Hills. And so we believe in a balanced budget. Let me talk briefly about the revenue side and then the expense side. Revenue for the 20, the proposed 2014 budget is up slightly over the prior year due to receipts increasing in the municipal income tax. And it's hard to know why the municipal tax receipts are increasing. It could be because Rita has access to more databases and is getting more collection. It could be that the economy is improving. Or it could be that people that were retired figured out two years into retirement, I think we didn't save enough, and they're headed back to work and they're earning some income. But the income is up on the, predominantly because of the revenue side. And tax receipts look pretty strong for 2013. In my estimation, we are going to exceed our budget estimate on the revenue side due to that. On the inheritance tax, that stopped on January 1st of this year. However, we have received some money from people that died in 2013 or years earlier. It's the most peculiar thing. We get a call from the county that says that they're putting X dollars into our account due to inheritance tax, and we never know who the decedent was or when they died. If they died and their will was not probated for a couple of years, they could have died several years earlier. We don't think that we're going to receive much, if any, money in 2014, so that is a zero. The local government fund currently shows zero since the allocation, if any, is unknown at this time. And that's another number we're trying to get our arms around to get a better budget. So that's the revenue side. On the expense side, the overall expenses are up about 2%. The salary increases that we did last month are fully funded in 2014. We just had an audit this year, so we will not have that expense next year, so that number is zero. We have looked at the debt that we have from bonds on a long-term basis, and we are, we continue to try to build those funds as the year 2016 is our biggest expenditure. And I think we're in pretty good shape right now. We're also trying to build some funds in 2014 for the repaving of Wenton Road. And that's gonna, that's a, that's a big number. From Ingram all the way down to the south to the village line is probably a little over a million dollars to do that. And so we will not be able to do that whole thing without a lot of grant money, et cetera. And a lot of those grants require matching funds. So if we don't accumulate some funds towards that, we won't be able to do that. And I think that's kind of the highlights of the budget. So if anybody has any questions about anything I said with the budget, I entertain those now. I think you guys have had some time to look at them.
Just one thing, I know we were having the storm sewer issues. Are we amassing some funds for covering that and?
Storm sewers?
You know, collapsing, and I just didn't know.
Yes.
Okay.
We have three new.
The storm sewers have been collapsing in various places. I just wondered how we're ramping up with some of our funds to cover that.
All right. Anything else?
Nope. At the proper time, I will have an ordinance.
All right.
Do I remember correctly, is it the new charter that'll be voted on this year? Doesn't, that addresses this budgeting, some of these dates?
The timing already.
Makes it realistic, I think.
Yes, it will.
Hopefully, if that passes, we won't have that, we'll have better information when we're required to submit the budget.
All right. Move on unfinished business. We have an ordinance that had a first reading from laws and rules. Ms. Walter.
Hi, I'm going to do the second reading by title only. Ordinance number 2013-12 L and R.
Yeah, we have to suspend the rule requiring reading it in its entirety.
I move to suspend the rule requiring reading the ordinance in its entirety. It's very lengthy. And I move.
That's all you have to do. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rule requiring reading this ordinance in its entirety. Any questions? All in favor of the rule suspension? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? Rule suspension stands.
I would like to do the second reading now by title only and move then afterwards to adopt it.
Yeah, you just have, okay. Go right ahead.
The ordinance number 2013-12 L and R directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit to the electors of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio at the November 5th, 2013 general election amendments to certain sections of the charter of the Village of Green Hills. And at this time, I move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2013-12 L and R. The, directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit to the electors of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio at the November 5th, 2013 general election amendments to certain sections of the charter of the Village of Green Hills. Ms. Walter, please begin the discussion.
We received the updated version. They had to clean up a lot of mistakes on it. We made amendment that we added for the word commons. We added the words, the names of the streets that surround that to make sure that there was no confusion. And we added also the one word, we added for the Planning Commission and for the Recreation Commission, both should have the word for the members being staggered. One of them was missing that. The amendment that I passed before was to that effect. Mr. Walterman, do you have any, anything else that you would like to add on that?
I did, just a clarification. So when this goes to the ballot, they'll be individually voted upon?
No. Be voted upon as a mass.
Okay.
As a mass.
And just so I understand, like, because there's quite a bit of difference between some of them. I know it'd be a lot individually, but how does that, is that typical to bundle it like that and?
We could do it any number of ways. This is the way it's been presented. You know, when I saw the report, honestly, there's not a big change. A lot of this is, is, you know, moving some of our, you know, some of the sections into direct compliance with state law and, you know, and, you know, they seem pretty reasonable to me.
Okay.
And there were some mistakes from the typing before, and those were corrected as well. There was no spell check when they had that before.
Yeah.
It was more of a process question than anything. Because I could see you're almost as strong as your weakest link in this case. If there's something that seems to not be in line, then you're kind of doing either all or nothing scenario, so.
How do you feel about that? Dave?
I like it. Yeah, I think it's thoroughly done.
Yeah, this is, you know, one of the things that I wanted to get accomplished in my term as mayor. This is another step towards getting that done. The Charter Review Committee worked diligently at, you know, going through our charter word by word. And I think they did a fine job to, you know, get the, you know, this language, get this thing updated. And I think it's a good update. It hadn't been touched since 1988, so it was about time. It was about time.
Just for the record, we first studied it during our time in the February when we had our retreat. The two suggestions that we took in were made at that retreat. We then proceeded to discuss it thoroughly from one end to the other in the Laws and Rules Committee. Mr. Walterman was present and Ms. Kovat was present too. And we concur on those two amendments that I passed through at the time as well.
So is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk call the roll on the question, please?
Adams?
Aye.
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Walterman?
Aye.
The ordinance passes 6-0. Uh, moving along, Mr. Walterman.
Actually, it's to me. Yes.
This should be, first reading was done by finance.
All right.
What I have is the second reading of a resolution 2013.
Of the existing pickup.
14F.
Right.
Yep.
And I move to suspend the rule requiring reading the ordinance in its entirety.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rule requiring reading this ordinance in its entirety. Is there any discussion on the rule suspension? Hearing none. All in favor of the rule suspension? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Rule suspension stands.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2013-14F. Pickup resolution, existing pickup plan restated resolution of the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2013-14F. Pickup resolution, existing pickup plan restated resolution of the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Hamilton County, Ohio. That's a mouthful, but it does make tremendous amount of sense. Mr. Dries, would you please illuminate us?
I will bring clarity to the issue.
Thank you, sir. I'd appreciate that immensely.
As you are aware, the village pays a portion of Ohio police and fire pension, and those percentages are designated by law. We don't pay more, pay less than anybody else. And there are changes that are increasing. And what this resolution does is it increases the employee contribution for Ohio police and fire in 2013, and then again in 2014, and then again in 2015. This is often a misunderstood concept because it's expressed as a pickup plan. What, in actuality, the village pays for the total mandatory contributions to the fund. And then a portion is paid back by the employee to the village in the form of a payroll reduction. A total of 29 and 1/2% of a full-time police officer's salary is paid by the village to Ohio police and fire. And the employee pays 10% of that amount back to the village in the form of a payroll reduction. Starting in June, the village's portion stays at the same 19 and 1/2% and the employee's portion will increase to 10.75. So this is one of the ways that the funding of the pensions are being strengthened, and it's, it's being done by increasing the portion that is paid by the employee.
So they're going up 3/4 of a percent?
They're going up 3/4 of a percent. That is correct.
And this continues 2013, 2014, 2015?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion, questions on the ordinance? Well, hearing nothing. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Dries?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Walterman?
Aye.
Adams?
Aye.
The resolution is hereby adopted. Mr. Adams, I believe it's your turn as we move into new business.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have ordinance number 2013-15 SNS, an ordinance authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Gregory Forrest Lester Incorporated and declaring an emergency. I'll go ahead and read it. It's rather short. Whereas the Village of Green Hills sought bids from qualified vendors to provide tree pruning and removal services, and whereas Gregory Forrest Lester Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid following a competitive bid process, now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Gregory Forrest Lester Incorporated in the amount of approximately $39,600 for the tree pruning and removal project. Section 2, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of the village. The reason for said emergency is the need to remove dead or decaying trees or potentially dangerous limbs or stomps from the public right of way at the soonest possible date. Mr. Mayor, I move to suspend the rule requiring reading the ordinance two times on two separate occasions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rule requiring reading this ordinance two times on two separate occasions. Is there any discussion on the rule suspension? Hearing none. All in favor of the rule suspension? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please signify by saying nay. Are there any abstentions? The rule suspension hereby passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to retain the emergency clause in this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to retain the emergency clause in this ordinance. The statement was read, and the reason being to remove dead and decaying trees. As I recall from my discussions with the manager, that some of these trees have been designated as critical to be removed. So the sooner we get them down, the better for everyone. Is there any other discussion of the emergency clause? Hearing none. Hearing none. All in favor of the retention of the emergency clause, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Emergency clause is hereby retained in this ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2013-15 SNS, an ordinance authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract with Gregory Forrest Lester Incorporated and declaring an emergency. Mr. Adams?
The required advertising was completed to see competitive bids for this work, as well as additional advertising online. However, we did only receive one bid, but it's from a contractor after talking to the manager, that, from the company, we've used them several times before. They consistently have the lowest bid when we have had multiple bids, and we know that they do a great job.
Fair enough. Any other discussion?
I just have a question. How long were the bids up?
We're required to do it two weeks in a row, the bids. I'd have to look from start to finish, but probably about 30 days.
So, it sounds like there was ample opportunity for, for competitors to bid, and I guess a lot of folks are just busy this time of year.
Is most, is most of this ashmore issues, most of these trees?
Not anymore, no. We, that was our focus last year, but these are...
Just other old mature trees?
Yeah, and we also have a lot of pruning this time, which is a little bit more labor-intensive than removal, actually, so we're excited to be able to start into some of the pruning. Some of the issues, like our large limbs that are going towards homes, you know, we're finally addressing some of those.
Top baseball field.
Yeah, actually.
You cut that, cut that back. I know, it's cool. Thank you.
Took that one down, but, yeah, I'm excited about the pruning.
Yeah.